The Board will now come on the order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
President.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
President.
Alderwoman Negracia.
President.
Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice.
President.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Volmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Martin. A- Alderman Ornowitz.
Here.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Here.
Alderwoman Howard.
President.
Alderwoman Green.
President.
Alderman Odenberg.
Here.
Alderman Rhodey.
President.
Alderman Todd.
Here.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer.
President.
Alderman Mohammed.
President.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero.
President.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
President.
Alderwoman Boyd.
President.
Alderwoman Navarro.
President.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Rhodey. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Con. Twenty-one present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Tori Jamison from Lot's Wife Chaplaincy. N.C.
Yes, sir.
All right. Um, but before we begin prayer, I ask everyone to join me for a moment of silence for Officer Michael Langsdorf, who was gunned down this week. Former police officer for over ten years in the city of St. Louis and has served very, very well. So, please join me in a moment of silence. Pastor Jamison.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. Thank you to President Reed and the Board of Aldermen for inviting me here. My name is Pastor Tori Jamison. I am with Lot's Wife Chaplaincy, which serves primarily trans and non-binary individuals and families who are not well-served by other organizations. We have leadership today with me from Metro Trans Umbrella Group. We have representatives from our Pride Court and the Four City Sisters, who are Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence, with some important trans organizations serving our trans and non-binary communities. This is the non-binary flag and the trans flag. I am told that this is the first time that these are flying in here, and so thank you all for that historic opportunity to put these up today here on the 50th anniversary of Stonewall. If you do record anything I say, my pronouns I am using are they and them, so I would appreciate if you use those. So, today marks the 50th anniversary of protests at Stonewall, which is often credited as the American start of the movement of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer people to gain the same rights as heterosexual and cisgender. Cisgender means people who are not transgender counterparts. New York City and communities across the country, including here in St. Louis, had in 1969 and before many underground and community places where LGBTQ folks could gather. So know that Stonewall was from, was by far not the only meeting space, but what made Stonewall so different was that Stonewall was a place for everyone experiencing marginalization because of their gender identity or sexual orientation. There, they felt like they could be themselves. It also had a low cover charge, so it was accessible to the community, for especially those at most risk. And naming that, that's people of color, transgender persons, drag queens, butch lesbians, homeless youth, right? Today, in the early hours of this morning, fifty years ago, police raided Stonewall, which was a pretty typical occurrence, and arrested most at risk first. And while that was occurring this time, it was different, and patrons rose up and said no more. And that changed the course of American history. I am an out queer woman and pastor, and I'm able to stand in front of you today because of Stonewall and the continued progress that you all have made, and because of the resistance of a few black, trans, and gender non-conforming women and people. Progress in our LGBT community has been slow and is far from complete. What LGBTQ people are still fighting for is not a special place or special rights, but the right to live healthy and safer lives in places of our choosing with families of choice. I look at the gathered trans and queer people here, and for them and for others, I pray we live long enough to get the privilege to worry about affirming elder care, because that's still a huge issue in our city. But the statistics say that some and many of us are, as a direct result of our sexual orientation or gender identity, won't live to see it and to grow old. So we do have a couple elders among us, and we're really grateful that they're there, because we don't have that many in our community. It is my duty and job to bury folks in our community, and I'm really tired of burying folks so young. Alders, you all, and some of you for many, many terms, have fought to make St. Louis better for all of us, especially the most vulnerable. Thank you for enacting citywide protections for LGBTQ people in housing, employment, and public accommodations. Thank you for signaling support of the banning of conversion therapy for youth. Thank you for fighting for and funding programs that are seeking to radically shift life and safety in areas of the city with the highest need, like the Cure Violence Project that you all are working on right now. Thank you for fighting for people in your wards, one person or family at a time. There's a misconception that marriage equality won the rest of their rights, but that is anything but the reality. This is Pride Weekend in St. Louis, and to paraphrase Sayar Johnson of M.TUG, "Pride for us who are transgender or not gender expansive marks not a celebration or glittery party, but another year of survival." Fifty years black in, black transgender women are still the most vulnerable population. We lost Kiwi Haring not too long ago, and twenty-nine people last year were killed by violence, and eleven people this year, all black transgender women so far. It's not really a question of if, but when it happens again in our city. So I'm, let me take one moment to say what we really need, and then I'll pray. What we need in is a 24/7 funded walk-up shelter that has spaces for trans and non-binary people as a place. We have one facility that can take and help house trans and non-binary people, centering trans people of color, and that is our trans flat. There's only five beds, and it's privately run. We need funding for that, and we need funding for jobs. We're happy to talk to you. Any of these folks would be happy to talk to you about other opportunities. Thank you for all the work that you're doing here to celebrate your most vulnerable in your communities, so, and for helping to save lives every day. So I invite you to lift a hand if you would like, because that's my tradition. I wear a collar, I have a master's degree, but that doesn't give me any special access to the divine. And so I believe that we experience a divine in community and among one another. And so if you would like, you may lift a hand to participate in the blessing of these flags, or not. You may bow your head or act in reverence, or not, right? You can participate as you feel led. So I'm going to bless the flags and bless you all. May this transgender flag and non-binary flag be a reminder to all who see it that all people are worthy of love and our beautiful expressions of all the ways we can be human together. May these flags be a renewal of our commitments to inculcate thriving and liberation for the people in our wards, especially for transgender and gender expansive people. May they remind us that none of us are truly free and safe until all of us are truly free and safe. May be we led to commit to fighting for justice and equality even when it is costly and taking seriously the concerns of LGBTQ people. Those alders and those gathered who are LGBTQ or love and care for LGBTQ people know that you and those you love and support are beautiful, holy, and made in the divine image of the holy and who is known to us in many varieties and forms and genders. May you have an incredible day of work and celebration of this pride season and commemoration of Stonewall 50. Thank you for inviting me here. Amen.
Give Pastor Jamison a big round of applause. Thank you, Pastor. And thank you for blessing the flag for us. And I promise, when you return the next time, I will pronounce Chaplaincy correctly. Um, let's see. With that, we will suspend our regular order of business, take up our Courtesy Resolutions calendar. Alderwoman from the 20th.
President, I'd like to move that we move Resolution 85 to the Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
All right. Please proceed. It's just a, that's just a request.
Yes, we are, we have guests here today we'd like to honor, and so therefore I'd like to move Resolution 85 to the Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
It's been moved. It's just that to move it is a simple request, then you have a floor substitute?
I do have a floor substitute.
Let's do that, and then we'll go on to the, so right now it's on the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar, just by your request as a primary sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also further like to move that we, to introduce floor substitute for Resolution 85.
Is it on everyone's desk?
Yes, Mr. President. It should be on everyone's desk.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the 20th, Introduce the Second. Seconded by Alderwoman from the 28th, and we introduce floor substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Negracia.
Aye.
Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Volmer.
I didn't know that.
Alderwoman Martin.
I didn't know that.
Alderman Ornowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Kotar.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Rhodey. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Con. Twenty-four aye votes.
By a vote, staying the motion, Alderwoman from the 20th, and introduce floor substitute for Resolution 85 on the Courtesy Resolution Calendar. Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion for the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar. Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion for the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
Move by Alderwoman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderwoman from the 10th. Alderwoman from the 20th, would you like to approach the dais? Alderwoman from the 20th, would you like to, Alderwoman from the 20th, would you
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to invite members of Fighting Hard to come join me at the dais. Today, we're going to be, um... Resolution 85 is recognizing Fighting Hard, Fighting Hit-and-Run Driving. This organization was formed by Ms. Tiffany Stanfield on my right in memory of her sister who was struck and killed in 2016. Fighting Hard is a nonprofit organization that was formed to raise awareness, educate, and provide resources for families that are impacted by hit-and-run fatalities. The rate of hit-and-run fatalities in the city of St. Louis is almost three times the national average, with 36% of fatal crashes involving pedestrians. Almost 10% of our city residents use transit to get to work, and over 90% of those people who use public transit use a bike or their own two legs to get to transit stops. We also know that there is a huge racial and income disparity in pedestrian injuries. The city of St. Louis recognizes that all people have a right to access safe and comfortable transportation facilities despite mode of transit, age, ability, or income. And with this resolution, we are recognizing Fighting Hard for calling on the city of St. Louis to start to accumulate data by way of an annual report to take a look at how serious pedestrian injuries and fatalities is in our city. I'd like to recognize Scott Ogilvy, who is our newly appointed Transportation Policy Director, and I want to point out that this call for action on the part of the city is not confrontational, but it is in collaboration with our city, who will be pulling together these numbers on an annual basis to help inform us, Aldermen, and other policymakers in the city of St. Louis to start to really identify problematic areas and the causes of injuries and deaths in our city. As a preliminary measure, Ms. Scott, our former colleague, pulled together statistics that are really mind-boggling. In just a five-year span of time, we lost 64 people in pedestrian fatal car accidents, and over 1,000, 1,186 people were injured in just a five-year period of time in our city by cars as they are walking throughout our city. So this resolution not only recognizes Fighting Hard, but really recognizes their call to action and in working with the city of St. Louis to find solutions. And with that, I'd like to introduce Tiffany Stanfield, who started this organization just three years ago and has really done an excellent job. Tiffany?
Thank you. Thank you for having me. So I stand before you on behalf of several voices, several of the voices that's behind me, as a matter of fact, but many that are not here. I've come before you, I stand on behalf of Jameka Stanfield, Ebony Menace Mitchell, Ronisha Calvin, Montez Horton, Kennedy Briggs, Demetris DJ Smith, Candace King, J. Cameron Corin, James Tilford, Gerald Roseman Nixon, Elijah Taylor, Janelle Nelly Rice, Andre Wallace, Brandon Jennings, Vicky Williams, Alberta Rush, Justin Johansson, Kiana Boyd, Eric Kimani, Michael Ellis, Clinton Boris, Amber Wood, Morris Richards, Keisha Redding, and the list goes on. These are all victims of pedestrian fatalities. One thing that I've learned when I started this organization, and that those that I've partnered with and those that I come before you and I tell this story, one thing that I have learned, nobody cares. It's okay, because when we're, only we care is if we're impacted by it, correct? That's what we do. That's natural, that's human nature. So it's human nature for me, if you hear Spencer, Collins Mohammed, Martin, Boyd, Navarro, Reed, Falls, does that make you feel differently? It's when you're impacted, it's when we all have to come together and realize there is a problem. I get it. Pedestrian fatalities is a serious issue here in the city of St. Louis. Three years later, our numbers have not decreased, they have increased. Would you equate gun violence as a pedestrian issue, safety issue? Yes. Safety is the key here. Who's protecting the pedestrians? Who's enforcing the laws? This annual report is extremely important, because what it does, it ties statistics to real people. These are real individuals, real lives, long-term impact. When I first wrote this speech, I had all types of things in my mind. I was gonna talk about statistics, and I was gonna talk about how the nationwide rate has increased, and I was gonna go on and on and on about the numbers. What does that mean to us? Until I got some very disturbing news yesterday regarding my own sister's case. And because of that news, that's just one more case that another person that will not be charged with a hit-and-run fatality. So where does that leave us as families who stand here before you that have to live with the loss of their loved ones each and every day? So I would say this as I wrap up. Every single time that we hear a hit-and-run that's reported by the media, hit-and-run, pedestrian fatalities, it's like taking the Band-Aid off of our loved ones each and every time we hear it. So I come before you, and I'd ask that you as a board, you as individuals, that we turn to you as the field-level experts to dig deeper into a citywide problem. I thank you. I humbly thank you, Honorable President Reed, for allowing us to be here. Kara, thank you so much for sponsoring us, and many of you that have decided to come before us and really pay a closer attention, closer look at this issue. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the first.
Board, first I want to tell you, there are people that care. We do not need to see our colleagues' names on it. I particularly am impacted, because I share, and probably I've represented Natural Bridge longer than anybody sitting down here, so I've watched what has happened. Natural Bridge has been one of my passions, okay? So we do care. That's what I want you to know.
That wasn't direct. It was, it wasn't, it wasn't a direct "I don't care."
But I understand, I understand. But I understand what your larger meaning is, but I want you to know that there are a lot of people that care. Sometimes people don't put their heads up, they don't say the right things, they don't know what to do or what to say, but it's not that they don't care. Me particularly, I care, because it's part of my community, okay? So it's even more. Every time somebody gets hit on Natural Bridge between, I call it the dead road, between really Fair and Newstead, that is just like dangerous, okay? We need to have speed bumps, speed humps, roundabouts, everything in that part of the Natural Bridge. And that also speaks to the fact that we don't have businesses in that part. You don't tend to have the traffic casualties up where I represent, because we have businesses, and so people have to be careful, because it's not a Speedway. But when you get past really Marcus, or you get to Newstead and all the way down to almost downtown, there are no businesses. So when they get on that stretch, they just decide that this is where I'm gonna break loose and just travel at 100 miles an hour. The pedestrians also are taking their lives in their own hands when they cross against the light, cross in the middle of the street. I'm not saying that it's their fault. I am just saying, as a child, I was hit by a car with my mother holding my hand and telling me when I could cross, and it was a drunk driver at a stop sign, that when my mother said I could cross, he decided to come. Luckily, there was no speed, and I didn't get hurt, but I, that has been etched in my memory forever. And the number of people killed in that, that part of Natural Bridge is just unreal. But I know we have this problem also on Graboy, on Broadway, on Hall Street. One of my really good friend's son got killed in a one-car accident on Hall Street. So we have this problem in many, on Kings Highway, Union, I'm gonna get in trouble if I don't name all the places in my community. West Florissant, oh, if you go on West Florissant by the cemetery, you'll think you at the Indianapolis Speedway. This also is an indication that we need to be talking to our young people. We need to be explaining to them, you are taking people's lives in hands when you're driving like this. I'm not saying that elderly people don't do that, but a lot is the young people, and mothers and fathers and grandmothers and play-ants and whoever you are, you need to be talking to your children. You need to be explaining that in a, just that quick, you could take somebody's life. You're not trying to do anything, you might be a good kid, you might even be a straight A student, but when you're driving that car, that can be a vehicle, and I mean, that could be a weapon, and we need to be very careful about it. But I wanted to just address you and say, there are many, many of us who maybe don't know the right thing to say or do, but we care, and we appreciate you, and we appreciate this resolution, and I want to add my name to the resolution and to tell you that's, that anything I can do to help with that, I will be glad to. But it is personal for me, because I do represent part of that community.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that also, add to Alderman from the fourth. Alderwoman from the 14th.
I want to thank you for bringing this forward. I think that it is something, we have some public safety, or PSAs on the TV about Natural Bridge, but as the Alderwoman from the first said, we have this problem throughout the city. Graboy is a death trap. We've, we've lost children, we've lost elderly. I know up and down Graboy, in my area, further south, it's, it's really dicey. They've put some crosswalks in, but crosswalks are almost a flag for somebody to run people down. It's, it's a terrible thing that people are driving too fast. There's a combination of the technology that affords us the comfort of our transportation inside our encapsulated cars, and people not moving, you know, I guess, fast enough to get out of their way. But I think the whole piece of education and awareness may help us remedy this and hopefully make people more aware of the danger they, they ensue, that ensues when they're crossing these busy thoroughfares. Thank you very much for standing up, and I'm sorry for your loss.
All right. Alderman, Alderman from the 23rd, if, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move my microphone to the front.
I saw you moving.
Well, because I never get recognized. Anyway, Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to move, we make this in bank. It's been moved by Alderwoman from 23rd, seconded by Alderwoman from 22nd, that we make this resolution in bank. All in favor signify percent aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that, create another copy of this resolution in bank. Alderwoman from the 28th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, Ms. Stanfield, you are exactly right, that this is a safety issue that we too often neglect. I raise my children in a very, what is known as a very walkable neighborhood, and when they were young, people would ask me, "Are you worried," you know, that, about, whether it's about drugs or kidnappings? And yes, those are all important things to be concerned about, but every day, the fear that I had was that they were going to get hit by a driver. Maybe it's a soccer mom who's texting, or maybe it's somebody who's just blowing through a stop sign, whatever it is, that is a very real fear, it's a very real safety threat to our children. So I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. I also think what's important for us to keep in mind here, too, is that we have these, these traffic laws, whether you're entering into an intersection, whether you are, you know, checking on somebody, being aware, stopping at lights, stopping at stop signs, these are, we don't do those things because they're the law, we do them because this is how we take care of one another, because it is the right thing to do. We live in an urban area, in dense neighborhoods, and this is how we take care of each other, is by making sure that when, whether we're driving, whether we're in, on a bike, whether we're pushing a baby stroller, whether we're on a scooter, whatever it is, that we are aware, that we live in a community with other people, and we are responsible for one another. So thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I know that I'm gonna be committed, I would love to keep working with you, and I think all of us here are very grateful for the work that you do. And again, I'm very sorry for all of your losses, and we will carry that with us as we move forward in our work. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I really want to extend my deepest sympathies and condolences to all of you and your families for those that have lost members to vehicular hit-and-runs. It is absolutely a tragedy, and it's something that we can certainly do more to address in the city. I personally have actually, and I can think of at least three times where I've been on a bicycle and have been hit by a car. So, you know, I mean, it is something that is very near and dear to my heart. When I first got elected 10 years ago, I worked with the city to pass our first complete streets policy, which has since been updated a few times. So, you know, I know that there's a commitment down here to help you, your family members, and the citizens of this city to continue to address this issue. I've had, I represent a portion of Southeast City, and I've had traffic fatalities down there. So this isn't just one part of the city, or, you know, a specific part of the city, it is citywide, you know? And, and it's... And it's absolutely unacceptable when these types of events occur because they are preventable, you know? And so my heart goes out to each and every one of you. Thank you so much for coming down here and raising even more awareness around the issue. You certainly have my support and commitment to working with you all going forward and our community as a whole to try and address these issues. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Ms. Stanfield, you know how important this is to me and my family. When we were moving into our house on Russell, at Russell and Nebraska, 11-year-old girl was struck and hit and she passed away. So this is an issue that continues to be a major issue in the city of St. Louis. I'm really glad that we now have Scott over there to provide the data on an annual basis and to help us address this issue. I think that that is going to be a major help. Anytime we can provide more data and more information for people to paint it in a way that they understand it, that helps to begin to move them from where they are to a better place. I thank you for continuing the fight. You may not know it, but just by starting the fight, you probably have saved lives all across our city. So I thank you for that. My hearts and prayers go out to you, as you know. This is one of the most difficult things any family can deal with or has to deal with, the loss of a loved one. But you've turned it into something to help others. So thank you on behalf of my family and friends and people across the city who may not have an opportunity. Thank you. You understand what this resolution means. This resolution, highest honor the board has to give any organization individual. What it does, it cements in time some of your many contributions up until this point. So 100 or 200 years from now, when they research the records of the city of St. Louis and they read about this time and our rebirth and they wanna understand what we did to address this issue and how, what was the spark that started it all, they will read about your family and they will read about your sister and know that because of that, other lives were saved and we adopted policies to ensure that their people were safe all across our city. So again, on behalf of the city of St. Louis and this members of the board, Alderman, my family and friends, thank you for all that you do and thank all of the members of your family. Let's give them a big round of applause.
Thank you so much.
Alderman wanted to offer, any other members of the board who would like to come and take a picture with the Stanfields, please join us up here.
Yeah, these are multiple families.
Oh, multiple families.
This is Ronisha Calvin's family and Jasmine Curry's family that's been impacted, that's here today.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Oppose? Motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Another one from the 26th.
Make it quick. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my honored guest, I'm proud of my constituent, Dr. Joyce Roberts up in the gallery. She is now the newly-elected secretary of the elected St. Louis Public School Board that I am 100% in support of and I hope she knows that and I will definitely be in support of them taking full governance on the 4th. So thank you, Dr. Roberts, for all the work you do in the community. And I would also like to have as my honored guest, Mr. Antoine Pope up in the gallery as well. Brother Antoine, thank you for all your continued work in our communities. Thank you for always showing up and showing out. Thank you.
Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to recognize the Close the Workhouse folks up in the gallery. I see you up there and I've been getting a lot of messages from you guys and I just want you to know that I see you guys up there.
Any further, Alderman from the 4th. Hold up, sir.
I think that's the sheriff on top, Vernon Betts.
Sheriff?
Vernon Betts and Jeff Hans from the carpenters.
Let's give him a round of applause. Alderman from the 18th.
Board of all the people, I would just like to thank the people who are working on closing the workhouse to continue your good work and I'm 100% in support of you 'cause we can use that money for other things. That if we gave out treatment for drug addicts, if we had jobs, if we had eliminated poverty, we wouldn't have all of those people in the workhouse. So our city would be a safer place to live. I would also like to recognize Ms. Joyce Roberts and Mr. Vernon Betts, who are wonderful people who are making our city more safe and Dr. Joyce Roberts is making our educational system more informed. Thank you all for all you do.
Any further? Alderman from the 4th.
If you didn't hear me, Vernon Betts and Jeff from the labor union. I also like to add a moment of silence of respect for my wife who puts up with me every day. And Sharon Tyus. Thank you.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, like to wrap us up?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, we're gathered here on June 28th. This is Insurance Awareness Day, started by the insurance companies, who cares? Okay, anyhow. But it's more importantly, it's Mel Brooks' 93rd birthday and on this day in 1997, Mike Tyson, during a fight with Evander Holyfield, nibbled off a piece of his lobe. Asked why he did it later, he said it was simply irresistible.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on approval of minutes.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of minutes dated June 21st, 2019.
Moved by Alderman from the 22nd, second by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Oppose? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Locust Central Special Business District. The appointment of Mr. Ken Nuenberger, a property owner in the district, replacing Jared Opasol, whose term will expire on December 31st, 2019. The appointment of Mr. Mark Hirschman, a property owner representing renters in the district, replacing James Pendigraff, whose term will expire on December 31st, 2019. I respectfully request your appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, Mayor.
Alderman from the 6th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Locust Central Business District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve the mayor's appointment to the LBD.
Moved by Alderman from the 6th, second by Alderman from the 12th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Oppose? Motion carries.
That is the extent of report of city officials.
We dispense with line item 7. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We dispense with line items 8 through 10. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 82, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, an ordinance adopting and approving the petition to amend petition to establish the 705 Olive Community Improvement District to add property to the 705 Olive Community Improvement District, finding out public purpose for adding property and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 83, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, an ordinance approving the petition of an owner of certain real property to establish a community improvement district, establishing the Soulart Community Improvement District, finding a public purpose for the establishment of the Soulart Community Improvement District and containing the emergency and a severability clause. Board Bill 84, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to Cooperation Agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and 705 Olive LLC, authorizing other related actions and containing the severability clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Madam Clerk, assign Board Bill 64 to Ways and Means and 65 to Personnel.
So noted.
Reference to committee.
To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 64, 82, and 83. To the HUDs Committee, Board Bill 84. And to Personnel, Board Bill 65.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of the HUDs Committee. Board Bill 48, sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission pertaining to the zoning code Title 26, repealing Section 5 of Ordinance 70942, codified as Section 2652020 and 2652025 of the Revised Code pertaining to the Use Regulation and Conditional Uses of I Central Business District and enacting in lieu thereof a new section on the same subject matter, repealing Section 6 of Ordinance 70942, codified as Sections 2660020 of the Revised Code pertaining to the Use Regulations of the K Unrestricted District and containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 58, sponsored by Alderwoman de Gracia, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service, establishing a public works and improvement project for the I-64 at Jefferson City Streets Project in the city. Board Bill 59, committee sub-sponsored by Alderman Roadie, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance, re-issuance, and delivery of one or more series of tax increment revenue bonds, I'm sorry, revenue notes, including A, increasing the not-to-exceed principal amount of previously issued RPA 5 Tax Increment Revenue Notes, St. Louis Innovative District RPA 5 Project Series B, from an original aggregated principal amount of $2 million and containing a severability clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Streets Committee. Board Bill 76, sponsored by Alderman Vaquero, an ordinance establishing a four-way stop site at the intersection of Childress and Bradley, regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Childress at Bradley and regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Bradley at Childress and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 80, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance authorizing and directing the director's streets to permanently close, barricade, or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on the 4200 block of John Avenue by blocking said traffic flow at the intersection of 4200 block of John Avenue where it intersects with Penrose Street. The following board bills were reported out of Ways and Means. Board Bill 68, sponsored by Alderman Vaquero, an ordinance approving the petition to establish the Northeast Hampton I-44 Community Improvement District, authorizing the execution of a Cooperation Agreement between the city, the Northeast Hampton I-44 Community Improvement District, and the Jerry Ackerman Motor Company prescribing the form and details of said agreement, making certain findings with respect thereto, authorizing certain other actions of city officials and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 79, as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman de Gracia, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment pertaining to the location of corporate headquarters establishing earnings tax, earnings and payroll tax reimbursement account in support of the project described herein, approving a development and performance agreement related to such project and authorizing execution thereof and authorizing certain other actions by city officials. The following board bill was reported out of Public Safety. Board Bill 81, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaquero, and Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance repealing Ordinance 63984, approved January 1997. Ordinance 58540, approved March 1982. Ordinance 53693, approved December 1965. And Ordinance 58264, approved March 1981. All pertaining to the preservation of the public peace and safety in the city for the residents thereof by establishing a curfew applicable to juveniles and regulating their presence in public streets, alleys, right-of-way, and similar places and defining the duties of parents and guardians of juveniles and providing for their violation thereof and enacting in lieu thereof a new ordinance pertaining to the same subject matter and containing penalty, severability, and emergency clauses. The following board bills were reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee. Board Bill 56, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, establishing and authorizing a multi-year public work and improvement program at St. Louis Lambert International Airport, which is owned and operated by the city, providing for consisting of capital improvement projects to and from the terminal complexes, concourses, parking facilities, and garages, associated airport buildings, structures, facilities, roadways, driveways, and environs, and airport runways, taxiways, aprons, ramps, and associated airfield buildings, structures, facilities, and environs, and other associated airport improvement or program more fully described in Exhibit A entitled Project List Road. Board Bill 57, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the director of airports and controller, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport to enter into and execute the shared ride shuttle concession agreement between the city and airport best taxi service, granting concessionaire certain rights and privileges in connection with the occupancy and use of premises which is defined and more fully described in Article 2 of the agreement that was approved by the Airport Commission and is attached heretof as Attachment 1, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Public Employee Committee. Board Bill 34, as amended, an ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city a proposal to revise Section 2 of Article 8 of the city charter, which requires city employees to reside within the boundaries of the city and thus allow said employees, except for city agency and department directors appointed by the mayor, to reside outside the boundaries of the city and providing for an election to be held for voting on the proposed revision and the manner of voting thereat and for the publication, certification, deposit, and recording of this ordinance and containing an emergency clause. That is the... That is the extent of second reading and report of standing committees.
We dispense with line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 23, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 1920 North Broadway. Board Bill 25, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3230 Oregon. Board Bill 26, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2911 through 15 Ohio. Board Bill 53, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 4629 through 31 and 4715 Washington. Board Bill 54, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5125 Enright. Board Bill 61, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment, I'm sorry, approving a redevelopment plan for 720 through 812 South Teresa. Board Bill 70, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 5236 Vernon Area. Board Bill 46, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, an ordinance, amending Ordinance 69782, approved June 25th, 2014, by modifying the terms of real estate tax abatement and amending Section C of the attached redevelopment plan by extending the time of completion to June 25th, 2021. Board Bill 52, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 1014 through 18 Olive. Board Bill 55, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, redevelopment plan for 1900 through 34, Dr. Martin Luther King. Board Bill 66, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 1221 Locust. Board Bill 69, sponsored by Alderman Vaumer, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportement, authorizing and directing the issuance of and delivery of not exceed $5,172,000 plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment and special district revenue notes, Series 20A-B of the city prescribing the form and details of such notes and the covenants and agreements made by the city to facilitate and protect the payment thereof, prescribing other matters relating thereto and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 72, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, an ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for 1528 through 30 Locust. Board Bill 74, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, an ordinance amending Ordinance 70494, approving and authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to Redevelopment Agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri, and Pace Delmore Associates LLC, authorizing other related actions and containing a severability clause. That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 10th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. We dispense with line item 16, third reading consent.
Board Bill 62, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and Alderman Ornowitz, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Fire Commissioner to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency, assistance to firefighter grants to fund the 2018 apportionment and to expand funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, would you put Board Bill 62 on a third reading calendar, please?
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, place Board Bill 62 at the end of the regular third reading calendar.
So noted. That is the extent of third reading consent calendar.
Third reading, report of engrossment.
We have none. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Board Bill 1, as amended, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Vaumer, budget for fiscal year 2020.
Alderman from the 10th, you recognize on the third reading, final passes, your board bill 1, as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move that we pass Board Bill 1, as amended.
Move by Alderman from the 10th, entertain the second on that motion. Seconded by the Alderman from the 25th. You're a little fast. Alderman from the 10th, please proceed.
Uh, I renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we, third reading, final pass, Board Bill 1, as amended. Alderman from the 1st.
Can I give you all the signed budget anyway? Even though I'm gonna oppose it, I had to sign it, okay?
Okay.
I rise to oppose Board Bill Number 1, as I did, for perfection. Since that time, I did some inquiry from Mr. Paul Payne regarding some of the concerns that I had. So just wanna talk about some of the concerns. One of my major concerns is when we cut money from the budget to demolish buildings. A few years ago, there was a young lady from my ward that got drug into a building in the 22nd Ward and was raped and sodomized, and there but the grace of God. She lived because we had such a wonderful police department that they went out and found her. They searched vacant buildings, dumpsters, and everythings. I helped her mother, and she moved out of this community and out of the city, actually. And so she's thriving anyway, in spite of what happened to her. But it has been my mission and my goal that we not take money out of a demolition budget that because we do not want one other child to be drug into a...
Please state your point of order. Alderman, you have to stand there. Please state your point of order.
The Alderwoman of the 1st is talking about something that is a reflection of Board Bill Number 1, as amended. I think we should give her the utmost respect as she speaks.
Oh, okay. Everyone in the chambers and the galleries, please hold it down as the Alderman speaks. Alderman from the 1st, please proceed.
So anyway, I helped her mother, and she moved. But it's been my mission and goal that we take down as many vacant buildings that cannot be saved. I am not a person that just wants to tear buildings down. I am in fact a building hugger, and I rehab buildings. In fact, I've rehabbed buildings in the Alderman from the 3rd Ward, in the 4th Ward, in the 1st Ward. So I'm a believer in rehabbing buildings, but there are many, many buildings that are beyond repair. They have not been taken care of. And anytime we take a time to take money out of the budget for demolition, for me, it's very sad and disappointing. We've given people raises, large raises, which Alderwoman from the 20th brought up. But we're discounting life. If that had been any of your daughters or children or anything like that, you would not wanna see the budget reduced by $300,000. And the mayor made a great point of talking about, but we were able to restore overtime for the police. I actually went to the Ways and Means budget. I'm still waiting for the answer about the $6 million in overtime that went missing that we don't know what happened to. So it's not that I'm anti-police, but the police have a lot of answers that they need to give to our community. They're being indicted. We had an officer that had to sue for racial discrimination. Won a big lawsuit, congratulations to him. There is a lot going on with our police department. And we are at the, I feel like sometimes we're at the mercy of, oh, we need more police, but the policing we're getting is not the right kind of policing. And what is happening is that we have big civil suits. I ask the question, how much did we spend last year on civil suits? Because although the police officers are being found not guilty criminally, the city is then being held liable for civil suits. So last year, we spent on civil suits $5.7 million. $5.7 million. Of that, $3.3 million was for the police alone. Now, I've asked for some numbers that go back several years. I think it's gonna shock you. This comes out of our general budget. This comes out of our general revenue. So the things that we need to be getting done, we're not getting done. If I gotta have a police officer who gets found not guilty, but then he doesn't have to carry any kind of insurance or anything, and then I have to pay for it, and the people in my community can't get their grass cut, they can't get the buildings tore down, we gotta make sure that they get overtime, I don't want them to get overtime. I want the buildings to come down. That's more of a public safety factor for me than overtime. I do not want one other student drug into a vacant building, and it may not come up this time that they live. And then we don't know what this is gonna do to this young lady in the future and how she will have to deal with this. We kinda have an idea because we've talked to rape and incest survivors, but this lady is dealing with this. It shouldn't be anymore. One of the things I've done in working with Building Division about demolishing my buildings, my priority is if there is a school route or where people catch bus, that please demolish those first. So that has not happened in some critical areas. And so for me to stand up and say, yeah, I wanna vote for this budget, when I do not wanna vote for this budget because of that and other things, it would be wrong for me. When I think again, of $3.3 million that we could be using for something else, we have to start looking at making the police do just what doctors and lawyers and other people do. We have to carry insurance. The police are gonna have to start looking at insurance. When you get found not guilty, but you are found, the city has to pay for you being liable because civil suits say that you did something wrong, the city should not have to pay for that. You should have to carry your own liability, and you should have to pay for that. And when you start having to pay for that out of your check, maybe you'll be more careful in how you do policing, because it's not right for our community to pay for that. Another thought that I had was about Forestry Department. And I had, when I was the Chair of the Public Employees, I brought Forestry Department into the Public Employees, and we had a very candid talk with Greg Hayes, who I respect a lot. And it is not Greg Hayes' fault. It is the Room 200's fault and their policy. It's about not having enough full-time forestry workers. And I know for a fact how this works. When the city was saying they could not find enough forestry workers, I sent some young people to apply for full-time jobs. They would not fill the full-time jobs. And then I called around, and they said, well, we're filling the part-time jobs first. Why? So they got hired for the part-time jobs, but not the full-time. The fact of it is, right now, we have enough forestry work for the next three to five years in much of the city because we have so much LRA property that is next to the citizens who live in my community who are cutting the grass, who are taking the extraordinary step of cutting the front yards. They cannot cut the backyards because the city has not cut back there for three, four, and five years. And so you need a backhoe to get back there. That's a health hazard. That is a health hazard in my community. That is a health hazard. So we got opossums, all kinds of things, mice, rats. So then when you drive through North St. Louis, and people say, and that's how those people are in North St. Louis? No, they're not. That's how the city is. That's a policy that's coming from Room 200 that needs to stop. If you got money for everything else, you got money for all these sports teams, there should not be not one property in my community belonging to the city or private owners that is not being cut in three, four, or five years. And the reason why they went to not cut the backyard is because when I came back here in 2013, I started rioting my ward when they said that they were gonna be out of my ward. And then I would send pictures to Greg Hayes, who was then not the Director, he was the Commissioner of Forestry, and he would say, well, Alderwoman, we cut that. And I would so click and send it to him and say, no, you haven't. So after, one day, I did about 50 properties. And when I did that, he said, Alderwoman, you don't have to send me anymore, you just tell me which ones. But the fact is that it is not forestry's problem. It is all our problem, because forestry is so busy cutting LRA properties, which they were not supposed to do, that they're not able to trim your trees and do all the other things that they're supposed to do as forestry. It is not fair. So I am not blaming forestry. I am blaming Room 200 for idiotic policy that allows you not to cut grass for five, six, seven, eight, nine weeks and more. And you know that is a violation of our very own ordinance that says grass cannot be any taller than seven inches. So when you drive the city forestry inspectors and neighborhood improvement specialists, and you see that grass is higher than... Higher than seven inches, and we're sending notices to private people. Because I got one on my property saying that the city had cut my grass, which I sent them saying, no, you didn't, because we have somebody cut our grass every two weeks. And they admitted that they had not, they had the wrong address. But I got those letters to look to see, we sent out private people telling them, you have not done what you're supposed to do, and we're gonna fine you because you have not done what you're supposed to do. But we in the city are gonna have a policy that says that it is okay not to cut grass. And then we define neighborhoods by saying, that's how those people are, that's what they want. No, they don't. No, they do not. There should not be, again, I wanna say there, any place in the city where the city does not cut four or five times a year, and really more than that. And then the city has this short little time period from April or May to September. And sometimes you need to be cutting grass as long as it's warm. Sometimes I'm cutting grass in the 1st of December. So when you're not doing that, you're messing with my neighborhood standards. We have standards in our community. When I drive my community and everybody has cut their grass except for the city, then you're the slumlord, and that needs to be taken care of. And that's a policy. It's not the Alderman. So all the people who blame the Alderman, how come the Alderman don't do it? So again, when the downtown was filthy and dirty right after the Rams party, the next day downtown was not filthy and dirty. It wasn't because Sharon Tyus said, go clean it up, it's because the mayor said, go clean it up. In fact, they took people off of places they shouldn't be in the neighborhood, and they weren't where they're supposed to be. I also asked about the police budget, because I am really concerned about this police budget. The total police budget, all funds, is $182.2 million. That does not include the police pension, which amounts to an additional $38.8. And let's not forget that almost $4 million that we pay for civil suits. Okay? I don't understand that. We got $12.4 million for overtime. So then I asked, what about all these special events that we have? A lot of the special events, we make people pay for. But we have VP Fair and all these kind of things. Guess what happens? They don't pay any extra. We have to start making all of these bigwigs that have these special events pay for their additional policing, because it leaves the city short. It leaves the city short, and it's not fair to the rest of our community. We don't get to have police officers, okay? Because I'm all for the VP Fair, that's your special event, you pay for the police yourself. The police can't say this, so I'm saying this for you, the police. It is not fair to the police that they should have to be forced. Well, we won't call it forced, we would be called it, they encourage them greatly to have to work during these events. That's not fair. It's a special event, and the people who are throwing it should have to do it themselves. They should be paying for it. It's a great thing, but you need to hire your own security guards and police and not make people work overtime and not pull people out of the communities where they're supposed to be. Another reason I asked, I talked about the forestry, I talked about the police, and I talked about the Building Division. There are other things in here, and that's some of the prerogatives from executive department and how they prioritize things. What I want you to know is I will continue to vote no until you have a priority that says all the citizens in St. Louis should live a great life. All the citizens should expect to have quiet peace in their neighborhoods. All the citizens should be able to go home and not worry about this email I got this morning from this young lady who turned in a vacant property in May to be boarded. Now, of course, I called, but I shouldn't have to. She turned it in to Citizen Service after, the way she's supposed to. She woke up this morning to somebody breaking into the house because Citizen Service had not gotten around to having that building boarded up. I had it boarded up. I don't mind doing that. That shouldn't be something that we have to deal with. It should not. That could be another tragedy. We, in all parts of the city, want to have quiet enjoyment of our community. We want a different priority than creating these little bubbles for certain people to live in at the expense of others. If one alley is dirty, every alley in the city ought to be dirty. We ought to be taking all this trash over to the neighborhoods who think that that's all right for that to happen. Let me say, I'm putting my own alley at risk, because people will say, your alley is clean. It really is clean, because my husband and I get up every day and clean it. And the city does do a pretty good job of picking up the trash, and people don't tend to dump. But it's not fair in these alleys where people are dumping and people are leaving trash that you're putting this somehow on the community. I saw Todd Walterman a few, about a year and a half ago, I sent it to the Chair of Streets then. This Asian lady got a $500 fine because somebody had dumped behind her property. And Todd Walterman was on TV talking about, well, that's too bad. How insensitive of you. She was saying, I didn't put this there. Why would she have to pay that? There has to be another way that we can protect our alleys and access. And I wanna say to the people who are out in accounting, you enjoyed the Blues winning, you made a lot of mess in our community that we picked up, there is no way we will be allowed to come out to your community. There is no way we will be allowed to come out to your community and do that. And also for all of you all who think that the city is a dumping ground, it is not. Do not come in my neighborhood dumping. If you have to pay for trash, we also have to pay for trash too. Take your dumps right back to your neighborhoods. Dump them in Clayton, dump them in University City, dump them anyplace else. Do not come in the neighborhoods in the city of St. Louis. We are not a dumping ground. We invite you to come and enjoy all the great things we have. We're not a dumping ground. And I would implore the mayor to hire more full-time forestry people because I am going to file a complaint with the Personnel Director because our charter talks about that we're supposed to have full-time employees, not these temporary part-time employees. And we have enough forestry work for full-time employees for the next four or five years. And for that reason and others, I am voting no on Board Bill 1.
Thank you. Alderman from the 18th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Board of Alderpeople. I'm voting no on on this board bill too for some, many of the same reasons Alderman from the first ward gave. For example, in my ward, right now, the grass is in violation. And when they cut the grass and foliage and shrubbery, they do not clean it up. And that's against the law. It's supposed to be seven inches, some of it's almost two feet, three feet in some places. It hasn't been cut at all. I don't know what's in the in that grass. And also the limbs, this foster cut the limbs, the street department's supposed to pick up the limbs. In my ward, I've driven by, there are limbs all over the place. Those limbs could cause an accident. Those limbs have been there for two or three weeks. I also oppose that bill because of the parks department. We have three parks in our ward. One park was built, the conference station, the restroom was taken out and no restroom was put back in. I've asked for two Johnny-on-the-spots because two of the parks don't have any Johnny-on-the-spots. The other thing is we have a park, no, we don't have any organized supervised activities in the park. And this will lead me to say that if we, and so those are jobs that should be created. One way, and so I oppose it because the different departments are not doing that job. The third reason is that I oppose it because of the fact that this budget does not take into consideration of the fact that we would not need half of the police if we, officers that we have now, if we would eliminate poverty. Most of these people in the workhouse and in the Justice Department are in there because of poverty crime. We must stop. We must stop the war. We must stop the war on North St. Louis. We must stop the war on people lovers of the same gender. We must stop the war on women. We must declare war on poverty. That is what we must do. And then we will be able to get the services that we need. Instead of having 182 million dollar budget for the police, half of that money should go for prevention. We should, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. We must prevent crime in the first place. And that way, we will have a safer city to live in. And until, until we spend the money, until our product has changed and we put what is needed in the foster department to get the job done, what is needed in the street department to get the job done, what is needed in the parks department, until we change our priorities, we need to change. The money is there. It is not that the money is not there, it is the fact that the money is not being spent on what it should be spent. At the same time, we were, we were talking about cutting the wars in half to save money. We need 28 wars. We need our parks. We need our forestry. We need our street department, but we need more money and we need 28 Alderpeople. And I would not vote on this budget or any budget for the city until we shift our priorities to a, to a people-friendly budget instead of a millionaire and billionaire-friendly budget. Thank you. So I will vote no.
Thank you. Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Bosley, I'm the only one that's sit down and talk. I know y'all have been tired of hearing me talk. I heard the other day, somebody called me yesterday and said I preached my own funeral. But it looked like I'm going to die with the same thing going on in my community. Shemene, would you hold up that board? Y'all are to be tired of me talking about these buildings and these bricks. 1,242 empty buildings. I got enough for you to hold up too, Bosley. There's a bunch of our front. Would you want to live next door to this? This is a shame. This is a shame. I have a street called Aldine from the 4,500 block to the 3,900 block. You cannot walk down the sidewalk because of the shrubbery and the foliage that have grown over the sidewalk, trees coming out of the sidewalk. When the demolition companies come, they have two crews. They have a stealing crew and a legal crew. The stealing crew go down the street and say, oops, we got the wrong address and try to build it halfway down. I got foundations that are not, have been torn down. I've been in office 12 years now. Shame on us that we would take any kind of money out of a demolition bill to do anything. We need to take money from from the police department. I like John Hayden, but that has nothing to do with it. What love got to do with it? When you don't love me, I don't love you back. It is horrible. Look at these buildings. Would you live next door to these buildings? I nicknamed them diehouses because it's had the size of them off in the front and you can see the inside of toilets and the closets and the paintings and all. You ought to be tired of me talking about it, but evidently you're not. Don't come down here with the same old, same old, doing the same thing, taking money out of this budget, out of the budget that's needed. I don't live in North City. I live in North St. Louis. Two cities with one mayor. And you're mistreating us and shame on you for doing this. But look at this. Look at them close. I have 57 of them. But I have 1,242 buildings that look just like this that someone lived next door to. And you're taking money out of the demolition budget. They got another thing with Better Family Life working. But I, every day, there's not a street that I go down, there's not three buildings. And the only way there's not three buildings that need to be demolished because there are no buildings. I got contiguous blocks of land with no houses on them at all that have been stole or torn down. I am so tired of talking about it, but I hope, and whoever's writing my appetizer, somebody is writing my obituary, but I hope before I die, and I'm not dying, don't get nervous. I ain't going nowhere. I'm gonna stay here and haunt you. But before I get out of here, before I die, and I'm not retiring, that we do, do something for the area. We have, and Jesse, Mr. Todd, you're talking about two feet of grass. I have eight feet. My grass grow eight feet. I don't know what they're putting in there. We call it Northside corn. We're going to try to see if we can smoke it or eat it in one. But it's out of order and I've done, I've done a lot of television programs coming out of the grass, eight feet tall, growing on the city sidewalk. How do we let this happen? Now, I'm fond of Mary Lotta Cruisin, but again, what love got to do with it? I took her down to Aldine and showed her, if you do nothing else, Madam Mayor, clean up Aldine from Cora to Van de Vena. It is hideous. And Navarro, Heather Navarro, you are the only one that has expressed, taken a tour with me to look at my ward. I don't be scared, as Nellie would say. Come on down and see what, how we live on this side of the town and squallow in third-world conditions like the Flintstones compared to the Jessons. Yabba dabba doo, we're not having a gay old time. God bless.
Thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Going to sound like a broken record. Every year I get up here and basically say the same four or five talking points about how our budget does not match what I think our priorities and our values need to be as a city. Budgets are moral documents. And what we continue to show with the moral document that we pass here is that we value putting people in jail. We value criminalizing people. We value being punitive. We value the underdevelopment of of the North Side and parts of Southeastern City. And what we, we, what we don't value is people in this city. You know, we, we're still at a place where the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has not been repaid, the miniscule amount of money that it is owed. We have an affordable housing crisis in this city right now. You can't go anywhere in this city without seeing folks on the street. We clear people out of downtown ahead of big events to put a Band-Aid and blinders over the fact that we have so many people in our community who cannot afford basic living expenses. And the city forces the closure of a, of a shelter and opens it with one that only has the capacity to serve a third of the people that were in the one that was closed. And there is no long-term plan for a walk-up shelter for folks who need a place to go 24 hours a day. While we are passing bonds down here to support renovations for a football or a hockey stadium for a team that has now seen their profits go through the roof, other cities are passing bonds to support affordable housing. Charlotte just did an $80 million bond to support affordable housing. Think about what that could do to our city if we did even a fraction of that to ensure that everybody within our limits had the ability to access safe, affordable housing. You know, I think we need to talk about police too. I'm going to echo a lot of the sentiments from the Alderwoman from the first. You know, I think one of the things we need to change is maybe if we actually had settlements be paid out of the budget of that department that has that infraction, maybe we would get some change. Because every year we are spending more and more and more on these settlements and they need to be paid out, but they, these settlements need to be something that creates a stress on the system and forces the system to change rather than just saying, we're going to pay it out and keep doing things the same way that we've been doing it for 40 years. Well, we continue to make national news, week after week after week, for issues with our police department. The way that we can actually be known nationally and the way that we should be known nationally is for actually looking ourselves in the mirror and addressing these issues so that we no longer have to pay out these settlements. You know, I, I'm frustrated that, you know, once again, we are funding the workhouse. But you know what? With this new judge's ruling that we had a few weeks ago, that is going to put us on a path where very soon it is going to become financially irresponsible for us to keep this open in addition to it being inhumane and morally reprehensible. And so because of activists that are up in the balcony today, you know, I think we can get this thing closed. And I, you know, I'm saddened that we are not doing that today, but we are putting in place the things that I think we need to do to get us there. I also want to speak to cure violence. You know, this is something that I've been a proponent of for years. And I think that this is a very good step. And we have to recognize that this is a drop in the bucket. $500,000 is breadcrumbs. And we continue to put breadcrumbs into good policy in this city. When you look at other cities that are a quarter of the size of St. Louis, they are spending $800,000 a year on their cure violence programs. They're spending $1 million a year on their cure violence programs. We are still not investing the amount of resources that we need and the places that we need to invest them to ensure that we actually have a safe community for all people. Investing in that prevention is what is in the long term going to bring down these crime rates. It does not matter how many police we add to this city. If we are not addressing poverty like the Alderman from the 18th Ward said, then we are not going to see a decrease in these crime rates. So while I will vote no largely in symbolism today, like I do every year, and I will get up here and give the same speech that I give nearly every year, my hope is that eventually we will adapt a budget process that is more thorough and transparent and malleable to be able to do some of the large structural changes that we need to make in our budget, that we're actually evaluating all of our programs within the city to see their efficacy, to make sure that we're putting our money in the places where we get the best bang for our buck because our, our revenues are miniscule compared to what our needs are. I think we need some sort of process that is longer than two months, that allows for more public input and more public acknowledgement of what is actually happening down here. But that's difficult with the, the timing of our, of when we come back into session and then we're required by July 1st to pass this budget or whatever the initial budget was goes into law. We need to rethink this process. And if that means taking a charter amendment out to the people so that we can get a better budget process, I think we need to look at that. And I think we need to do that. So I won't take up any more of your time today. But as we go forward, we need to think about our priorities. We need to think about our moral stances aboard. And we need to be, start to shift our priorities more away from incarceration, away from being punitive and into actually addressing the root causes of so many of the issues in our communities.
Alderman from the 23rd.
I'm actually going to stay very brief. If we do not pass this and the budget goes in the way it was presented to us, the fire department will be short on Narcan, drug addicts will die, the fire department won't have the apparatuses needed to go into a building, people will die. I agree, we need a better budget system, but letting the budget go in the way it was will actually cost lives. Because again, the fire department made it clear, they can't afford to have the Narcan to save lives. So we could vote against this. And then we could also sit back and say, well, oh, it's sad, somebody died in a house fire. It's a shame the fire department couldn't go in. We're, we sit here and pray for the firefighter that dies in a fire because that doesn't work. I don't like the way the budget system works, but I'm definitely supporting it because the budget, the way it was presented, has a lot of flaws that I believe that as a group in Ways and Means, we worked very hard to correct these flaws. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 17th.
Yes, Mr. President, I was wondering if the Alderwoman from the 15th would yield?
Alderwoman from the 15th would yield to Alderman from the 17th. Alderman from the 17th, please proceed.
Yes, Alderwoman, I was just curious. You had asked, suggested that we have a, a longer process to hear the budget. Out of curiosity, did you attend any of the budget hearings?
I watched them online.
Did you testify in front at any of them?
I did not.
Okay. That's all I want to know. Yeah, if we're going to go ahead and prolong the process, it's always helpful to think that, you know, people actually participate in it. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, what's a good budget is in the eye and the beholder. The Alderman from the 23rd rightfully talks about drug addicts and getting them drugs. I rightfully talk about that the original budget did not take, there was Ways and Means that are recommended to E and A. So I'm not going to put that on you, that that $300,000 be taken out. It wasn't you or the mayor. It came from Ways and Means. So the original budget for me was better because taking down buildings are, many, many lives can be affected by that, not just by somebody is getting dragged into the building, but also just the effect of having a building next to you that's vacant and you're scared that that building's going to fall down. In fact, that happened to us a couple of weeks ago. And the rain came in on a building and the building washed out into the streets. So the street, I want to thank the Building Commissioner Frank Oswald because he got out there that day and they started demolition without, I think, I don't even know if we had a, some kind of emergency contract in place because he did such a good job of getting out there. But it's dangerous when you live next door to these things. I also want to, I forgot to talk about one other thing. We cannot have one zoning inspector for the whole city. That is ridiculous. For all of you all who may not have other problems, when you see all, it's creepy. We look like we live in Las Vegas with all the lights now, okay? And all the signage. That's visual pollution. And the way it's, way we have it right now, nobody is stopping anything. We have conditional uses where they tell people they can't do- We have conditional uses where they tell people they can't do anything, or they shouldn't be doing things. We got one zoning inspector for the whole city. There's no way that she can keep up with enforcing the zoning rules, the ones that we have put in place and told people they can't do. That is ridiculous to have one zoning inspector. That needs to be, we at least need three more. So, those are the kind of things that, a quality of life for everybody, not just North St. Louis, everybody. If you see these things and you're frustrated in your community, that is because we don't have adequate staff, and that's not correct, and that's another reason I'm voting against this budget.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 10th, you recognize the close.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate all the comments from our colleagues here, but while it was proposed, we might have taken $300,000 out, we are actually adding, increasing the demolition budget by $625,000 with the budget we have in our hands. So, there is no money being taken away, we're actually increasing the budget for demolition. Also, if you do not vote for this, you will not have $500,000 of breadcrumbs for cure violence, or for whatever other program we would deem necessary to help end violence in City St. Louis. If you do not vote for this budget, you are voting against the firemen and Narcan and all the things we asked, in the Ways and Means, what we asked for, we received almost 85% of every request we asked for. If you vote no on this budget, I appreciate your stand and your moral aptitude, but you are denying the necessary things that we had to fight for in this Ways and Means budget hearing. Stand on your morals, that's fine, but we're trying to save lives, firemen's lives, we're trying to tear more buildings down, we're trying to do what is right for the city. So, vote for this budget, and these things will happen. Vote no, and if this does not pass, you'll get the budget that Ways and Means didn't, you know, we might as well just stay home. So, look that up in your Funk and Wagner, with that I close, and I move, we pass this out. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's been moved by Alderman from the 10th, second by Alderman from the 25th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 1 as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Koltar. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Con. 20 aye votes, five no votes, and one present.
By your vote, staying the motion, Alderman from the 10th and third read, and finally pass Board Bill Number 1 as amended.
Board Bill 31, Committee Subsponsored by Alderman Rhodey, An Ordinance Recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment Authorizing and Directing the Issuance and Delivery of Not to Exceed in Aggregated $17,259,000 Plus Issuance Cost Principal Amount of Tax Increment Revenue Notes, Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, Phase 4, City Foundry St. Louis RPA 2, Redevelopment Project Series 20 AB of the City, and Containing a Severability Clause.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill Number 31, Committee Substitute.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for third reading and final passage.
Moved by Alderman from the 17th, entertain the second on the motion, second by Alderman from the 10th. Alderman from the 17th, please proceed.
I renew my motion.
Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 31, Committee Substitute. There's been objections in the previous roll. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Davis. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. 21 aye votes, three no votes, and one present.
By your vote, staying the motion, Alderman from the 17th and third read, and finally pass Board Bill Number 1, Committee Substitute.
Board Bill 35, Sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, An Ordinance Authorizing the Execution of an Intergovernmental Cooperation Project Agreement among the City, the City Foundry Transportation Development District, and the City Foundry Community Improvement District, and Containing a Severability Clause.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill Number 35.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 35.
Been moved by Alderman from the 17th, second by Alderman from the 22nd. Been moved by Alderman from the 17th, second by Alderman from the 22nd. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded.
Mr. President, am I, I was gonna, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to close on that, if I could, and just make a couple of comments.
You've been recognized to close.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say that several people voted no on this last time through, and I just wanted to kind of put this in perspective. This is the Foundry project. Is, the momentum that was created from the Foundry project has been very substantial. Not only is the Foundry being done, it's several hundred million dollars, but next door to it, there is another project that's being proposed, the Old Armory, which has sat vacant for many, many years. Both of these projects, the Armory, which has been vacant for, since I was a kid, this site had a Foundry working in it for a long time, but probably for the last 15 years or so, it's been vacant. We've had several proposals for it. We actually had a chance to go ahead and put a strip shopping center in. I felt it was an inappropriate location to do a strip shopping center, that would have required some additional subsidy as well. To the south of the Armory, there is a project that's being proposed called Iron Hills, and the, and that is right across the street from the new medical center that is being built at SLU at Grand and Shoto. Collectively, that kind of development, in my opinion, at one point, there was some concern that the medical school might end up relocating, but in my humble opinion, that collective development probably saved South Grand. If, for whatever reason, the medical center would have just closed, or there was actually some discussion of some of the Catholic hospitals in the suburbs building a medical school on their campus, and that would have been devastating, because there's literally thousands of people that work there, who then go to South Grand and recreate, eat, and of course, live in the neighborhoods along South Grand. The energy that has resulted from both the hospital being built and the Foundry being completed has accelerated the rate at which the Great Rivers Greenway is progressing. And I think there's now a considerable amount of philanthropic interest in how to connect the Great Rivers Greenway through the Cortex area, connecting at the Forest Park, and then all the way down to Shoto, you know, the Shoto Greenway, which will then connect downtown. That whole idea of alternative transportation and taking bicycles and so forth has triggered a lot of imagination within the region. TrailNet, which is one of the great advocates for bicycling, has initiated an effort to go ahead and begin connecting the neighborhoods north and south to that east-west greenway. And of course, perhaps the busiest of the north-south routes is Tower Grove. And there will likely be a TrailNet route, this will be their kind of model route, they want to make it successful, that will actually reach down into the 15th ward and through the 8th ward, and connect them by bicycle up through Cortex, so that people living in Tower Grove South, and Shaw, and places like that, can gain better access to not only Cortex, but to the new shops and resident, the new shops and entertainment facilities in the Foundry, and will also be able to access the greenway that would take them all through, you know, the metro area. So it's a very, very exciting thing, and I think it's kind of important for people to understand what they're voting against sometimes, and how that all got started. So, with that, I close, and I renew my motion to third read and final pass Board Bill Number 35.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 17th, second by Alderman from the 22nd, that we third read and final pass Board Bill Number 35. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Davis. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. 22 aye votes, and three no votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 17th and third read, and finally pass Board Bill Number 35.
Board Bill 50, Floor Subs as amended, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, An Ordinance Recommended by the Parking Commission, Making Appropriation for Payment of the Operating Expenses, Capital Equipment and Improvement Expenses, Including Lease Purchase Agreements Involving Parking Division Assets, Debt Service Expenses of the Parking Division of the Treasurer's Office, Keel and City Hall Parking, Information Technologies Office, Argyle Parking, Shoto Building and Parking, Williams Paper Parking, Central Downtown Parking, Buckingham Parking, Couples Parking, and Justice Parking for the Fiscal Year Beginning July 1st, 2019, and Ending June 30th, 2020, Amounting in the Aggregated to the Sum of $17,976,481, and Containing an Emergency Clause.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill Number 50, Floor Substitute as amended.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for a third reading, final passage of Board Bill 50, Floor Substitute as amended.
Moved by Alderman from the 22nd, second by Alderman from the 10th, Alderman from the 22nd, please proceed.
I'll take any questions.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was a bill that was made better through compromise and through listening, and it is my hope that the treasurer, operating in the capacity of parking supervisor, would do the right thing and have regular parking commission meetings monthly as prescribed through ordinance. And I will hope that it's appreciated, the work that was done here at the Board of Alderman on behalf of the Parking Commission. I certainly appreciate my colleagues that gave me the spirited debate to go back and redo this bill and make this bill better. So with that, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, second by Alderman from the 10th, that we third read and final pass Board Bill Number 50, Floor Substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. 23 aye votes.
By your vote, staying the motion, Alderman from the 22nd and third read, and finally pass Board Bill Number 50, Floor Substitute as amended.
Board Bill 62, Sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard and Alderman Ornowitz, An Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the Fire Commissioner to Enter Into and Execute a Grant Agreement with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency, Assistance to Firefighters Grant, to Fund the 2018 Apportionment, and to Expand Funds by Entering to Contracts or Otherwise for Grant Purposes, and Containing an Emergency Clause.
Alderman from the 26th, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill Number 62.
Members of the board, I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 62.
Moved by Alderman from the 26th, second by Alderman from the 23rd, Alderman, please proceed.
Board Bill 62 is a grant agreement that will provide smoke detectors and CO detectors to the citizens of St. Louis. Many of my residents and residents across the city of St. Louis have benefited from this program, where the firefighters come to your home, survey, look over, and see where they would be best fit, and they install them, and this is all free. Seniors and families alike have all benefited from this program, and these detectors are not installed by the St. Louis Fire Department, but they also reduce injuries to the death, reduce injuries and fire deaths in our city. reduce injuries and fire deaths in our city because they prevent fires in our homes.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 22nd?
Yes, Mr. President, members of board, with the Alderman from the 26th, yield for questions?
Alderman from the 26th will yield a question until Alderman from the 22nd.
Yes.
Alderman from the 22nd, please proceed.
Alderman, do you know where the closest firehouse is to the 26th?
Yes, it's at the corner of DeBoliver and Delmore, just south of the corner of DeBoliver and Delmore.
And is, is it a pretty reputable fire, um, house?
Yes, it is.
Are they pretty responsive?
Yes, it is.
Do you ever see the Fire Department out in your community?
I always see the Fire Department out in my community because I have a close relationship with some of the firemen in our community. Uh, I was a business owner in my community for over 15 years, and I had a problem with the exhaust for a little while, and it was always reading fire, you know, my smoke detectors, CO detectors were going off, and I had to constantly call them. And one day when I called them, I just broke down and started crying. And they said, "Why are you crying?" And I said, "Because I feel like I'm wasting you all's time." The firemen literally save lives. I don't take the Fire Department for granted. So programs like this, them taking the time out to come into people's homes and install fire detectors, talk with them about best fire safety practices in their homes, we, I think it's a very important program, and that's why I, um, think this Board Bill 62 is an important grant agreement for us to go with.
Well, I certainly want to thank you for sponsoring the Board Bill. Um, I too have had the opportunity to take advantage of the services of the Fire Department. I believe in smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, and, um, more homes probably have a smoke detector than a carbon monoxide detector, but being a landlord, I decided to put them in my units, and for some reason, one kept going off. And, you know, it's just kind of like the smoke detector, oh, it just needs a battery, it's a false alarm. But it was giving my daughter headaches, because, um, it was going off in the tenant upstairs apartment, but downstairs is where my mother-in-law lives, and my daughter would, you know, be in the back room, she kept getting headaches, then kept hearing this detector go off. And so someone had the goodwill to call the Fire Department, and they came out and realized the heat exchanger in the furnace was out, so it was actually emitting carbon monoxide. So it certainly saved my family's life.
Absolutely.
And, um, so they, they do awesome work, our Fire Department, and they probably don't get enough credit for the dangers that they put themselves in, putting themselves in harm's way, thinking about themselves over others. So with that, I would, uh, Mr. President, like to add my name as a co-sponsor to Board Bill 62.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Noted.
Any further discussion? I'd also add to Alderman from the 20th, uh, and Alderman from the 23rd. Any further discussion? And Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you again, Ms.
Please, Alderman from the 26th, and...
Uh, put that in bank?
Um, no, we, no, we, not...
And please add my name to it, thank you.
Yeah. Um, the last time that changed this bill was during the perfection phase. Uh, so it's too late to add your names to the bill. It should, all of that should have been done during the perfection phase. The bill has been perfected. Once it's on the third reading calendar, it's too late to, to change, uh, the bill. So it, so we'd have to move to reconsider it and move it back to do any of those things.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Alderman from the 26th, you recognize, to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this, um, this is an important grant. We need to support our Fire Department as much as we can. Like the Alderman from the 22nd said, I don't think they get as much credit as they deserve. They literally fight an element, and I've seen firefighters fight a fire, and if you've never witnessed firefighters fight a fire, you would be amazed and in awe of the work they do, uh, first in, first out. So, uh, with that, I would like to renew my motion to third read and finally pass Board Bill 62.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 26th, second about Alderman from the 23rd, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill number 62. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alder, Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Davis. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Twenty-four I votes. I'm...
You're already...
Go back?
No. Yeah, yeah, just Alderman from the 3rd, uh, what is your vote, Alderman from the 3rd?
Apologize, Mr. President, I, I would like to vote aye.
All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Thank you.
That is 25 I votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 26th and third read and finally pass Board Bill number 62.
That is the extent of third reading and report of engrossment and final passage.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bill 1 as amended, 62, 31 committee sub, 35 and 50 floor sub as amended.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session to fix his signature heretofu today in that these may become law. First reading resolutions.
Resolution 79, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Con, establishing the role of LGBTQ+ liaison for the St. Louis Fire Department.
Alderman from the 25th, you recognize on the first reading of resolution number 79.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution 79, uh, calls upon the Fire Department and EMS providers to provide, uh, a current LGBT, or, uh, current employee as an LGBT resource, uh, for the department. The liaison would be responsible for promoting equality, uh, and inclusion in the workplace and educating first responders on LGBTQ+ related emergency healthcare conditions and respectful practices when caring for these individuals. Um, this does not create another full-time position within the department. This is an existing FTE within the department, um, that would take on these responsibilities. Um, Chief Jean Kersen has signed off, given his approval, uh, for this position, uh, and the St. Louis Police Department and the Mayor's Office currently already have LGBT liaisons within their staff, um, so it's not new to city government. Um, and with that, I would ask for unanimous consent for resolution number 79.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderman.
I renew my motion, or I would like to, uh, move to pass resolution 79.
Been moved by Alderman from the 25th, second about Alderman from the 1st, that we, uh, adopt resolution number 79. Alderman from the 1st would like to add our name as a co-sponsor. Alderman from the 25th, 24th, and Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you.
Was there something?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to, uh, add my name as a co-sponsor. I think this is a great piece of legislation, and thank you.
Okay, uh, so you have the 1st, the 24th, and the 9th, uh, the 23rd, the 12th, the 13th, the 26th, somebody's behind, somebody behind you. Alderman from the 25th, oh, Alderman from the 2nd, uh, Alderman from the, uh, from the 6th, Alderman from the 8th, Alderman from the 18th, Alderman from the 28th, uh, that, would you like, you would like to make, it's been moved...
Yes, like to make a motion that we do this in bank.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 23rd, that we, uh, make resolution 79 in bank. There's been an objection to, uh, making it in bank, but everyone that, anyone else would like to have their name added, Alderman 22nd, 16th. I think we got everybody. All right, I think we got everybody. Alderman from the 25th, you recognize, close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 25th, second about Alderman from the 1st, that we adopt resolution number 79 as, with all additional names added. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries.
That is the extent of first reading resolution.
I would also invite everyone who wanted to co-sponsor that bill to please check with the clerk directly after the meeting to assure that we did not miss your name and that, uh, that it did make it into the permanent record. Any first first reading?
That is the extent of first reading resolution.
Second reading.
Resolution 73, sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard, President Reed, and Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Vacoro, Alderman Mohammed, and Alderman Norrion. Gamma Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated has requested that the St. Louis Board of Aldermen advocate and issue a public statement in the support of early voting and same-day registration in the city, in the city.
Alderman from the 26th, you recognize on this second read and resolution number 73.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we third read...
Uh, just, that we...
I'm sorry.
Adopt resolution...
Adopt resolution...
73.
73, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's all right. It's been moved by Alderman from the 26th, second about Alderman from the 1st, that we adopt resolution 73. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, during, uh, committee on Monday, um, during committee, meeting on Monday, the members of the Gamma Omega Chapter came and testified to us on the importance of this, uh, resolution, and all of us were in agree, in agreements with it, along with fellow colleagues here, along with the League of Women Voters. Uh, this is just in support of a board bill that one of, uh, my neighboring constituents, State Representative Wiley Price, is presenting in the state, and so we would like to just begin the conversation down here that we absolutely support same-day voter registration and early voting because it could change the way voting and elections look in the city of St. Louis and the state, Ms. Lord.
Thank you for bringing the resolution, Alderman. It's been moved by Alderman from the 26th, second about Alderman from the 1st, that we adopt resolution number 73. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Resolution 74, sponsored by President Reed, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Green, Alderman Martin, Alderman Navarro, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Todd, and Alderman Spencer. City of St. Louis Senior Services Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2019-2020.
Alderman from the 12th, you recognize on the second reading, resolution 74.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I'm asking for adoption for resolution 74, please.
Move by Alderman from the 12th, second about Alderman from the 1st, any discussion? Alderman from the 8th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, my name was supposed to be added as a co-sponsor on this one, and I would like to request to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change, add, uh, Alderman from the 8th to resolution 74.
So noted.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 12th, you recognize, to close.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of board. I, I, I renew my motion for adoption of resolution 74.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 12th, second about Alderman from the 1st, that we adopt resolution number 74. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Resolution 78, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, 401 South 18th Street LLC in the city of St. Louis, Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Alderman from the 6th, you recognize on this second reading of resolution number 78.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that we adopt resolution 78.
Been moved by Alderman from the 6th, second about Alderman from the 12th, Alderman from the 6th, please proceed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Resolution 78, um, if passed, would, um, help allow Build-A-Bear to move its headquarters into St. Louis City, um, by Union Station to take advantage of some of the, um, new ways that they're trying to expand their business model and be close to retail. Uh, it would provide a 10-year real estate tax abatement on their property, um, in an enhanced enterprise zone, which is why it's coming through via a resolution as opposed to a board bill. And we could have asked for 100%, we're asking for 75% to help Build-A-Bear cover the incremental cost and, um, what they are going to have to pay for taxes. They will be leasing this building, um, from a landlord, so it's a little bit different than a traditional deal. The value of the tax abatement, um, over the course of 10 years is $289,000 net present value. Um, some of the things I think are exciting that Build-A-Bear has agreed to do is provide for a number of green infrastructure improvements in a bill, a building that's about 30 years old, um, so needs quite a bit of, of upgrading in that regard. Um, their construction jobs will be unionized or at prevailing wage. Um, the percentage of women working, um, in totality across the world in Build-A-Bear's offices and headquarters and, um, and shop sites is 89%. 50% of people of color are employed by Build-A-Bear as well, and, um, they are recognizing significant shifts in their business model, and as I mentioned, addressing those, some of those include, um, some expanded licensing fees, um, e-commerce, they have a new website, and a number of other items. So I'm excited to welcome, I think, a headquarters to St. Louis City in the first time since I can remember, and I'm happy to take questions.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 8th?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, if I could, I'd like to inquire of the Alderman from the 6th.
Alderman from the 6th will yield a question to the Alderman from the 8th.
I will.
Alderman from the 8th, please proceed.
Thank you. Um, Alderman, I just want to be clear, we're talking, this resolution is specifically dealing with the property tax abatement, and does this have anything to do with earnings tax or payroll tax or anything like that in this?
That's a companion bill that will be heard next week.
Okay. Um, okay, all right, that's all I have, thank you so much.
Alderman from the 24th?
Would the Alderman from the 6th yield for questioning?
Alderman from the 6th will yield, or Alderman from the 24th?
I will.
Alderman from the 24th, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I was just curious if you had, uh, an idea of how many, uh, employees will be working, uh, in this building?
Sure, there, uh, Build-A-Bear currently has 217 employees. 30 of those employees live in the city of St. Louis, and so we will have the difference in that amount paying earnings tax here in the city, um, that's a increase over the 30 that currently are.
Okay, and then, uh, just one more, uh, question, just on kind of a, a technical nature, uh, I noticed that there's a, a blank date in, in the bill, um, so...
On the resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah, I asked that be filled in, so, um, what's...
Would you like to offer, uh, would you like to offer an amendment to the resolution to...
Yes, but I can't remember what date we needed to add, if it was when it was, I don't have the resolution in front of me, I apologize, either when it was passed out of committee, I think.
Uh, when the duly noticed public hearing was held in June of 19.
Yes, so that would have been, uh, June 25th, if I could, yes, have an amendment to add the 25th in there, that would be great.
I have nothing further, thank you.
Thanks for catching that.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 5th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Alderman from the 6th will yield.
Alderman from the 6th will yield to the Alderman from the 5th.
I will.
Alderman from the 5th, please proceed.
This is just a, a follow-up, uh, from the concerns or questions that I had in committee. Do you have those direct numbers as far as, uh, the minority participation and as well as the workforce? I know you had the women workforce with the minority.
Right, so the total, for the total number of employees they have at headquarters in their shops and, and worldwide is 89% women and 50% people of color.
Okay, so the... Okay, so the, is, so what percentages of the 89, the 50% is half of the 89 or...
No. It's 50% of 100.
Okay, of 100, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, would you like to offer the amendment now to the resolution?
Am I okay to...
Alderman from the 6th.
Yes, I'd like to amend resolution 78 to add June 25th.
To fill in the blank?
To fill in the blank.
And add June 25th as the...
You're doing this, but I don't know what it means.
No, just, you have to read that sentence so that it's clear to everyone where June 25th will fit within the resolution.
Okay, I'd like to amend resolution 78 to include June 25th in the blank on the resolution to make sure that we have this in proper form.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 6th, second by Alderman from the 13th. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Alderman from the 6th, any further discussion?
I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 6th, second by Alderman from the 12th, that we adopt resolution number 78. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
That is the extent of second reading of resolutions.
Miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, July 1st, 2019, Education and Youth Matters Meeting will be held at 6:00 PM in the Kennedy Room. Tuesday, July 22nd, 2019, Ways and Means, 10:00 AM in the Kennedy Room. Rules Meeting will be held at 10:00 AM in the Leisure Room. Wednesday, July 3rd, 2019, is the full board meeting, 10:00 AM in the chambers. We will be closed on Thursday, July 4th, and Friday, July 5th, in honor of the Fourth of July holiday.
Any further, Alderman from the 4th.
Mr. President, members of the board, Intergovernmental Affairs Committee here, hearing is 9:00 on Monday. Intergovernmental Affairs, 9:00 on Monday.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Intergovernmental Affairs, 9:00 Monday. Any further, Alderman from the 14th.
I'd like to wish a constituent of mine a happy birthday. Happy birthday to Catherine Birch.
Well, tell Catherine happy birthday. Let's give her one. Alderman from the 22nd.
25th is next.
Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to make sure that folks are aware that tonight at 6:00, or 5:30 PM, at the intersection of Arsenal and Oregon will be the Transbillability March. They'll start at that intersection, which is right near Arsenal and Grabaway, and they will continue along Arsenal to the Benton Park area, where they will have a barbecue and festival and a lot of folks interacting and mingling with one another and sharing support and love for our trans brothers and sisters. So also this weekend, as many of you are aware, it is Pride Festival Weekend. It marks the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall Riot, which sparked the LGBT movement. You know, it's been, I believe, 30 years now in St. Louis, an official movement and organized effort. Unfortunately, I will not be able to participate this Sunday, which is actually my 20th anniversary of participating in Pride. For those of you that aren't aware, I actually served on the Pride Board when I first came out for several years, and so it's very bittersweet that I won't be able to attend this weekend. But I am a godfather as of Thursday morning at 4:45 AM, and I'm going to pay a surprise visit to my new godson down in Dallas. So I figured it would be really important for me to be there for his mom's, a lesbian couple that married several years ago. It's their second born, but I'm very privileged and honored to be able to call their second born my godson. So I'm surprising them this weekend. Unfortunately, that means that I won't be able to participate in this weekend's activities, but I will be there tonight to support our trans community, and I would encourage everyone to do so as well. And hopefully my friends in Dallas don't get wind that I'm coming down. But I do, it is a very momentous occasion, you know, 50 years in the making, and folks, you know, I try to remind people that, you know, we have come a very long way in a short amount of time, but there is so much more work to do in this struggle and this movement for equality. And so please, you know, don't take our progress as a sign that things are complete. They've only, you know, made some advancements and we still have a lot more work to do. So thank you.
All right, Alderman from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I am very excited to announce a Black Wall Street Festival that's going to be held in the city of St. Louis and the city of Welston. It's the first opportunity since I've been down here to know that the city and the county is actually collaborating on something. Most people will remember, that's probably over 30, I'm gonna guess a 35, that the Welston Shopping District back in the 50s was the shopping mecca of this whole region. People came all the way from Belleville, Illinois, 50 miles away, just to shop in the city of St. Louis. And the Welston Shopping District was basically kind of like from Evergreen in the city of Welston, and it ran pretty much down to Goodfellow. The nucleus of it was predominantly from Hamilton to Evergreen in St. Louis County and the city of Welston. So I'm really excited that we're all participating. It's going to start at 11:00 AM and go to 6:00 PM tomorrow. There's going to be live entertainment, a kids' corner, a car show, and the entertainment's going to be real exciting. The entertainment's going to be blues, so those who like blues, we have some phenomenal blues celebrities, which will feature Big George Brock and the New House Rockers, as well as Miss Haci and Fresh Start Band. So I want to encourage, you know, as many people to come out. It's certainly open to the public. We're looking forward to an exciting time. This is the very first time we've done this and collaborated in this way, and I want to send a really big shout-out to Mr. Farrakhan Shagok, who lives in the city of Welston. Young man, I think he's about like 27 years old, just a phenomenal facilitator at pulling all this together. It's also going to be a car show, and we're just looking to have a really, really good time. And then really inspire people to see a great vision of how that Welston Shopping District can be, again, a shopping mecca for our whole region. So I encourage everybody to come out. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 24th.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to congratulate Alderman Kohn on his godson being born and point out that Alderman, Alderwoman Ingracia and Alderman Vacaro had birthdays this week, and I wanted to just wish them a happy birthday.
A happy birthday. Alderman from the 8th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to make sure everyone had an invitation to come down to Tower Grove Pride tomorrow. This is another Pride celebration that will be taking place on the southeastern side of Tower Grove Park. There are over 250 vendors that will be there this year. This festival has grown exponentially, and this will be entirely situated within the park this year. In past years, it's been down South Grand. Will be in the park, and it goes from 11:30 until 7:00 PM tomorrow. Entertainment of all kinds, several different stages. Come and say hi, and we'll happy to welcome you down to Tower Grove.
All right, any further announcements? Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to first offer our condolences to the family of Leroy Wilson, who was a well-known, well-served person and member of our community, and he will be laid to rest this weekend, memorialized, rather, this weekend. I would also like to correct something I said earlier because of my special place in my heart for the St. Louis Fire Department, Fire Departments all across the country, is stated first in, last out. So I want to make sure that is on the record, that I said that correctly. And also, and also, lastly, on Saturday in the 26th Ward at our beautiful and beloved Woe Community Center, there will be a meeting for our circuit attorney, Kim Gardner, where she will be speaking about the neighborhood ownership model. This meeting is not just for the 26th Ward, it's open to any city resident to come out and hear about this program that she's promoting all over our city for us to take more responsibility within our community. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I did have an announcement, but I'd be okay.
Please proceed.
Yeah, I want to announce that we're going to have a Streets Committee hearing on Tuesday at 11:00 AM.
All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that, Tuesday, 11:00 AM.
And, Mr. President, I'd like to move to excuse the Alderman from the 7th and the Alderman from the 19th due to necessary absentee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, second by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
No.
Motion carries. Alderman from the 22nd, you make, recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to move that we adjourn until Wednesday, July 3rd, 2019, at 10:00 AM.
Moved by Alderman from 22nd, second by Alderman from 25th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
No.
Stand adjourned.